To order, this is a meeting of the Winnicott County Community School District Board of Education. It is November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five at six thirty P. M. We are in the Winnicott County Middle School Library. Meeting notices were sent to members of the press, members of the school board, and were posted on the front doors and/or in the vestibules of district school buildings. This is a meeting of the board in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public hearing. There may be a time for public comment as indicated in the agenda. The meeting will also be available to watch live at W W W dot YouTube dot com slash Winnicott County. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, roll call, please.
Stelzner.
Here.
Calwartz. Verich.
Here.
Ackman.
Here.
Harder.
Here.
Cundy here, Hanson.
Here.
Recognizing our administrative team, we have Dr. Larson, Mr. Katie, Mr. Sippert, Mr. Manere, Dr. Hughes, Mr. Jarabek, Ms. Dodd, Mr. Pitch, Mr. Schrader, and Ms. Horvath. And visitors, of course, there's a visitor sign-in in the back, please sign in. And we will now have the open forum. I have Chris Cabot.
Good evening, Chris Cabot Winchester. Is it acceptable to speak and ask a question and just have one comment on the RFP or is it, is it off the book for tonight?
You want to ask a question about it?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, thanks. So I'm not fully understanding the whole deal. But the way I read the RFP, that is a request for a proposal sent out to multiple firms to take a look at our district and provide some type of a proposal back to us, make some type of recommendations essentially. And throughout time over years or whatever it may take, there'd be a process that would have the board here in the district take a look at what their proposals are and make some decisions going forward to eventually have some sort of potential change. That's ultimately kind of what I understand the RFP to be. In there, I thought I saw language and I understand that the firm that we select the proposal for this year would ultimately end up being the firm that would take care of whatever we would decide to go forward with. Am I understanding that correctly? Okay. I do recall.
Except for architecture.
What's that?
Except for architecture.
Okay, okay. So I think I listened to the board meeting last week or last two weeks ago and Dean was asking some questions about the, how do we, how do we kind of pick a firm without having a firm's, a scope laid out and a bid of the project or cost of the project all laid out because one firm may bid something one way, another firm may bid another way. I guess I'm in construction, that's how things kind of go. I'm just wondering if there's room in this RFP or contracts that we have with the people we've sent this out to not select that firm as the final firm that builds whatever it may be or fixes whatever may need fixing, but instead wait until a scope is defined upon based on the results of the proposal and then send out for bid to multiple firms so that we don't get into maybe, I'm just, it's going to say in a bad way, but maybe giving somebody almost a blame check. I know that we ultimately vote or you all vote on what to do and, you know, where the funds, what limits and all that kind of stuff go. But I guess I'd love to see multiple firms be able to take a stab at whatever this, this project ends up being. And I do understand, going back to the middle school referendum, that a firm was selected at that point and I remember somebody on the board asking, hey, can we have other firms? Or it take a bid at this and it was explained that the firm that selected sends out for three bids, therefore it's a fair game. But I question how good that is and is there maybe a competitive bidding that could be done outs, you know, at the firm level, not underneath the firm level. So if, if we can't change what we've sent out for this request and if we're locked into whatever we select, this firm we go with from a legal standpoint, understand that, then I would ask the board at some point to, to motion to, once the scope is defined, to take that on yourselves and send that out to bid to competitive firms from a big picture standpoint. Do you all understand what I'm asking and saying?
Yeah, so what you're really asking is to have a further review for the general contractor.
Right, yeah, yeah. So I just don't want to lock in in December with somebody based on all the, the package they put together, not even knowing what the, what they're going to come up with for costs. I just want to be responsible to our taxpayers and do the best we can that way. So that's, that's all.
Okay, thank you for your input. Jill Verich.
I am just commenting on last Wednesday, and I'm a member of the Winnicott County Area Community Foundation. We presented twenty-six thousand dollars, in excess of twenty-six thousand dollars in grants to Winnicott County teachers. We, there was a nice event at the Performing Arts Center in the high school acknowledging those, I believe there were fifteen educators total and might be more.
Twenty-six, it was kind of weird, it was twenty-six thousand dollars and twenty-six people.
Okay, okay. From elementary school up to high school, so it was a really nice event and great way to support our teachers and further enhance what they do in the classroom.
Thank you. That's quite a bit of money and I'm sure the teachers are grateful for those grants that are provided to them. Okay, with that, I will close the open forum and move on to the open session and I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Harder, second by Ackman, to approve the consent agenda. Any questions or comments from the board? Roll call, please.
Stelzner. Verich.
Aye.
Ackman.
Aye.
Harder.
I'm.
Cundy, I, Hanson.
Aye.
District report card.
On board members, you do have the, the presentation in your package, but you might want to turn around. Was that a little comfortable for you because this reads behind you?
And I would introduce Mr. Joe Pitch as our Director of Learning to walk us through the report card.
Worked this afternoon. You told me, you jinxed me. You better, that is not going to work tonight. Stone, Joe. If we can't get it, I guess. There we go. Perfect. If it wants to turn off, that's all right, I guess. If it doesn't work, we're just going to go without it. Totally jinxed me. Yeah, right. I'll plug it, plug it back in. I blame you. Yeah, I'm just going to go with that. Okay. Well, I'll get started, obviously if it comes up, we can just bring it in. We had the present, most people have the presentation in front of them, I'm sorry for public does not write the second. So Dr. Larson asked me just to kind of go through our state report card for the district. So the presentation we have today, if it works, if not, I could always get it up, we can send it out too. Obviously it's in the board agenda. That was out there and posted. So with this, we're just going to look through and there, maybe it'll work, maybe it won't. There it goes dark again. It's all right. So we're not without, so. Inside your board, inside of the presentation, really just looking at how this connects to our school improvement plan that we have with CISA six, right? So the culture of continuous improvement is something, the journey that the district has been on. And when we look at how this fits inside of our plan, really this fits inside of that academic pillar, right? So forty percent of our academic pillar, that top part there, is a part of our district report card. So we're getting that, our district report card score funnels into that academic pillar. When we think obviously about our educational system, there's a lot of facets that go into it, things of running a very efficient school district, and this is one piece of that, right? So inside of that, we're going to be looking then and kind of turning to the next piece, talking about just the overall school achievements, sorry, scores across the system, right? So as a district, we scored exceeding expectations at an eighty point four. As an elementary school, we exceeded expectations at an eighty point five. As a middle school, we significantly exceeded expectations at ninety-four point nine. And as a high school, we met expectations at sixty-one point four. As a system, this puts us in the top fifteen percent in the state. So I know Dr. Larson and I were looking at that for, through CISA, we get a whole kind of spreadsheet that looks at how the state has done and it puts us in the top fifteen percent as a system. As we look at metrics later on, you'll actually see we're higher than that in certain areas and obviously there's areas for us for growth too that we know of, that we'll talk through today. So look at the next part, as you look at the school report card, the first page really just shows you demographic data. That'll show you our enrollment, that'll show your open enrollment, it shows you the race diversity of our system as well as special, or students of special education, economically disadvantaged, and our English language learners. The economically disadvantage is a key point for us because there's that little pie underneath it that just shows the percentages of our school district of how we actually get scored on, right? So inside of it, DPI has a calculator that looks at how much of your weight will be in achievement or growth. And based on your economic disadvantage data, that moves that piece, right? So as a system, we're at twenty percent, roughly twenty percent economically disadvantaged, and that puts us at roughly thirty-five percent achievement, fifteen percent growth. If we would move that to about forty or sixty percent, that would actually get flipped. So it would be maybe fifteen percent achievement, thirty-five percent growth, right? So that is just kind of a calculator as we look at this, it's important to understand that even the schools inside of our district have different measurements just because of the different demographics inside of our system, right? So it's important to understand that calculator, that little pie chart there on the front page, as you're continuing to look at the data, okay? As well as on the front page, it has our overall score and then the four priority areas of achievement, growth, target outcomes, and then also on track to graduation. So the next page there is just the pie chart, I'll just kind of turn around and with that, so as a district, as I said, we're exceeding that eighty point, sorry, eighty point four, exceeding expectations. DPI had new kind of cut scores this year, they re-normed around just the overall score range. And you can actually see inside of there, they bumped up almost every category by a point and then actually the meets expectations is by two points now. So just a little bit difference when it comes to actually overall metrics of what would exceeding expectations or significantly exceeding expectations would be. So just know that that's just a little bit different this year. That was work that was done by educators this summer through DPI. Turn into the next part, we get to the four priority areas, which is achievement, growth, target outcomes, and then on track to graduation. So when we look at our achievement for a system, remember that is about a third of what we have in our report cards, so that thirty-five percent. We are meet, sorry, meeting or beating ninety-three point four percent of the districts across the state, right? So we're really in that top six point five percent, which is pretty impressive for a system, right? So that's definitely a kudos and a celebration to the work that you guys have all done. Not that I've done, I've only been here for a couple of months. But definitely the work that the system has done has produced very high achieving students inside of our system. With this, it looks at two years of data, when they re-cut the forward scores a couple of years back. So there's two years of forward data in there, we'll have a third year of data in it this school year, right? So once we're done with forward this year, when you get the report card next year, there'll be three years of data in there. And you'll see there's three years of data in the growth as well, that plays a factor. So when you look at the current year's data for achievement, it's weighted at one point five percent, the score is. Last year's is at one point one percent, and if we had a third years, it'd be at a half a percent, just like you'd see in the growth, right? So when we look at data inside of the report card, there's always three years or three data points inside of it. So it's kind of slow to change at times. So it's important to note that it's not just going to fluctuate year to year really quickly because there's three groups of data inside of that for a lot of it. Within our achievement, I just want to make sure we hit on all the spots. They said that is definitely a highlight for our district and one is our top priority area. When it comes to growth, so growth is an area of focus for our district and a kind of that next step of how do we get to a high achieving and high growth system, which is very challenging because we're taking students that are meeting and already advanced and how do we continue to push them even higher and growing just as fast as their peers across the state? So when we look at growth, it's a pretty kind of crazy metric when we talk about value added. We won't go into depth of how that's all scored, of how they come up with those calculations because they actually send those out to a firm to go through. But when we look at this, it's taking the similar student across the state. So if I'm eleventh grader student here in the high school and I'm meeting expectations, and maybe I'm white and I'm economically disadvantaged, it would compare me to similar peers like myself across the state. So it's saying, how are you growing compared to similar peers in your demographic area? So when we look at that, it's looking at how are you doing across that? So it's, it's important that we understand, once again, that it's not just always about moving up to the next level, but it's really looking at how are you moving compared to your peers in your same demographic area. This area, once again, also has three years of data in it and it has the same concept where it's looking at twenty-one, twenty-two school year versus twenty-two, twenty-three school year. How did our district grow? And that's a half a percent weight. Twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four is a full percent weight and twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five is a one point five. So always the most current data in there is what's going to mean the most. But just know we've got data from twenty-one, twenty-two still hanging on to our school report card as well. So when we look at growth, once again, it's just a longer process and we need to think about how do we start to look at what we're seeing and really try to keep some more point in time data as well. Yeah, done. Sorry.
If we have a higher performing district academically, does that affect the growth score?
It's more challenging to grow, yes. So that's actually one of the things that, as we looked at this, I worked with Eric Larson through CISA six and it's, it's hard to be high achieving and high growth. There are some districts out there and some systems out there. And that was actually some of my data digging already between when it was released last Monday and now. There's nothing that's like perfect to our system of roughly seventeen hundred kids, meeting our same demographics. There's a couple, Ousburg is a little bit smaller than we are and it has high achieving and growth and achievement. It's about just over a thousand kids, so significantly less than us, but that's pretty much the closest. Otherwise, you're talking Whitefish Bay, Brookfield, some of those Milwaukee suburbs as well, way bigger systems than what we are. So I'm trying to figure out and look at, how do we find something similar that would fit similar things to our context to look at structurally? How are they looking at things? How are they digging into things? And it really comes back to us is looking at our data, analyzing what we're doing and seeing how are we then creating growth plans off of that? Some things that we were currently doing this year is I've done with elementary and middle school and actually setting up with Dr. Mashad for the high school to really just dig deep into our assessment data. I was with Mr. Schrader's staff for almost two days, English for a full day, E L A for a full, or sorry, math for a full day. Really digging in depth of, what does this look like, digging apart standards, how are we scoring year to year to look at it from a curricular standpoint as well as looking at it to student to student, comparing it to our ready, our classroom data as well. They're trying to triangulate. Where are those gaps? And then how do we create plans based off those gaps? So. From a growth standpoint, that is the big thing, like I say, in there. It's really understanding kind of say, where are those gaps and how are we continuing to move that needle forward? Looking at the next part or the third part is that target group outcome. So this is looking at the bottom quartile of our data, so that bottom roughly twenty-five percent. So as a system, we're, once again, meeting or exceeding eighty-one point six percent of the districts across the state, so we're scoring at that top echelon again. This data is really looking at that target group, that bottom group compared to their peers in the district. How are they scoring and how are they doing? So one thing that you can see is the growth of, those students is exceeding the growth of some of our other top end students. So then that's a data point we dig in and say, why do we think that? Why do we notice that? And really start to understand some of our practices within our system to ask questions structurally, what do we think is going on? Why do we think it's going on? And then how do we create those plans around that? And then the last piece we have in the, from the data standpoint, is just that on track to graduation. So as a district, we're, once again, exceeding ninety-one point eight percent of the districts across the state. So this is looking at chronic absenteeism, so are they missing ten percent or more of the school year? So roughly around fourteen-ish, fifteen-ish days, if they do, they would come into that percentage. So right now, you can see we're at eighty-seven point six percent of kids would not qualify, so roughly twelve point four percent of kids are chronically absent. Means they're missing more than ten percent of the school days. Graduation, we're at ninety-eight point five percent above the state at ninety-one point nine. E L A proficiency, which is, these next two are really definitely some shine, or sorry, spotlights for our district. E L A literacy at the third grade level, so we know with Act twenty, that's definitely a hot button issue there. We're scoring at ninety point seven and across the state they're at sixty point four, sixty-four point seven, right? So we're almost, you know, exceeding by twenty, by twenty-five percent there, which is very impressive for what's going on at the elementary school. And then at the middle school for math, eighth grade math, as always, that target for algebra readiness going into high school. And we're scoring at ninety-eight point four and the state's at sixty-nine point three, right? So there's a lot of great things kind of going on in our system, a lot of things to celebrate. I would also say, obviously, we know there's some things with growth that we definitely want to dig into and dig deeper into and really understand why do we see some of these things happening? How do we create some plans? How do we understudy from different districts across the state that are maybe having some success in that? And really start to see like, how do we structurally look at some of those changes that make sense in our context? The last slide I have in there for you, I just really look at the next steps for me, which we've kind of highlighted throughout the presentation here. So for me, it's working with the administrators to align the continuous improvement work that we have, to move those targeted metrics forward, like we talked with growth and continue to dig into data. So continuing to support staff in understanding state assessment data and creating targeted action steps based on that student data. Working to support universal tier one practices, so just universal teaching practices across our system through our professional development days, giving staff choice inside of that, making sure they have a structure that meets their needs. And lastly, it's one of my goals for this school year is really mapping on our systems to support kindergarten through twelfth grade to understand what's going on, what's in place, what's working well, and where are those areas of growth that we're seeing inside of our system. So I know that's a lot, I'm sorry to speak fast too at times to get excited about these things. But for me, it's really coming back to, I think there's a lot of things we really need to celebrate as a district too, right? There's a lot of great steps in here, ninetieth percentile, ninetieth percentile for a lot of things. So once again, thank you to the parents, the school board, staff here, just to be able to buy into what we're doing as a system and continue to support what we're doing as a system. So any questions, I guess? Sorry the presentation didn't work. I blame Dr. Larson because she told me it wasn't going to work as we went through it this afternoon. Jokingly, jokingly.
I just have a comment first, great job everybody. But I know Dr. Larson did share with us that the next three meetings, each principal will be here to discuss the individual report cards, so stay tuned.
Yeah, correct.
I had a question on the cut scores for mathematics.
Yep.
It's comparing twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yep.
Big jump, ten percent increase, which is great for advanced math. I mean, how does that happen?
So.
In one year?
Yeah, so when, we actually saw a really big increase, which is exciting, in our third grade data. So that's the first grade coming in, so like, third grade is coming in, they don't have data prior to that. So we are seeing in our elementary school, Dr. Hughes, I think it's upwards of like eighty, eighty-five percent proficiency in some of our subject areas. I don't have the numbers right offhand, but I can get it for you too. But it's really exciting to see that data coming in and those lower grades, that's starting to funnel into our system. So that's where some of those jumps could be, is students that aren't in the system yet.
Right.
And then funneling in, and I can look deeper in that for you too.
So this, this might be a learning thing for me. I didn't know we identified students that young, if they were advanced or proficient.
Yeah, so in third grade is when they first take the assessment, third grade through eleventh grade. So in the third grade through eighth grade, they'll take the Wisconsin forward in math, math, E L A, and then in fourth grades, add social science and science in as well, and then in eighth grade as well, then in the high school, then they have pre-A C T, A C T.
So the reason basically was data, that's what increased the ten percent.
I can look deeper in there for you, but I know when we looked at our third grade data, that was definitely a spotlight for us coming into the system as well, but I can dig deeper into that for you too. Cool. Well, thank you everyone, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate that explanation. Personal communication device, data and policy. This was, I believe, FYI, Dr. Larson, for this with the violations.
Right, and I thought it was good timing with the law that was just signed in, just so you knew, we did meet the expectations of that law. And so I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that. So I'm sure Neil will be giving us a more formal policy that we'll look into as the policy committee comes forward. So we'll definitely adopt that. But I did want to share the cell phone data as of November third. So you can see there was a total of sixty-five total violations in the district. You can see which days those were on and where they were. And, you know, some kids have two violations or more, or, excuse me, two violations, so we're working with those kids. So it's always interesting data and I'll provide again in January or early So it's always interesting data and I'll provide again in January or earlier if you wish. Again, it's just more for the legal aspect and you understanding that we do meet the letter of the current law, so.
Any questions?
I have a question. So the, as I review the law, it's that we are required to have this policy in place. It says nothing about disciplinary actions or anything that we need to do.
Nope, nope.
Okay. So, Dr. Larson, I noticed the most infractions are in high school, which makes sense.
Yep.
So have you noticed with the teachers, is it stressing any of them out? I mean, are they getting distracted by?
I would say more so last year. So last year, we implemented the policy, and if you recall, we did a staggered start. So like the first week or so of school, we did not enact it. We just explained to kids, I see your cell phone, remember next week, that'll be a violation. And then we have the steps in place for the violations. I don't think any teacher likes to have to address it, but they know they have to. And I think if they're a unified front, that's what makes it stronger. If people aren't unified, then we're going to have an issue. But also in the procedures, you've noticed that we're not going to fight with a student in front of a class. We just said if somebody's going to refuse, just let Mr. Dobner know, he'll address that later, continue teaching. So it's actually amazing, you go up there during lunchtime and kids are talking, and it truly is. I'm in the hallways at the high school. Now am I always looking for cell phones directly? No, but I don't see them. If I saw one, I would address it. It's a nice environment, I think it feels good. I don't want to speak too much for the middle school, but I think a lot of the kids I know just leave their cell phone at home because it's not worth bringing it to school. I'm sure we have our bugs that like to challenge it, but overall, I think the policy's doing well for everybody. Like I said in my notes, I don't have any data per se that it's increased grades or anything like that, but I think it has increased relationships and communication at the high school and middle schools. Elementary, you guys are pretty good there too.
Anything else from board members? All right. The debt worksheet. Mrs. Knapp and Mr. Sippert, yes, please.
Can you take your lanyard off, please?
I am speaking on behalf of Mr. Sippert. I did not want to throw him to the wolves, pardon the pun, regarding the debt worksheet. So in your packet, you should have had the debt worksheet because I believe there has been requests to discuss when the debt's going to fall off. I want to walk through this worksheet with you a little bit. There are three debt issuances out there that still need to be paid. On the far right, you can see the total payments that are going to be made. All of that debt will fall off. So we have one debt issuance for about 9.6 million that relates to STEAM auditorium. That will fall off in April of 36. The major middle school renovation, we had two bond issuances for that in order to, and I relied on Baird for this, it had something to do with maximizing the interest rate and tax implications with that. We had one for 28, or I can't read it, 20 something plus another five. That will fall off in April of 43. And then we had the second issuance of 5.3 million and that will fall off in 4/135. However, I need to caveat that. If you look at the total payments from start to finish, from, you know, the beginning of this year to the end, Baird does a really nice job of trying to even out what our payments are going to be by structuring the debt appropriately. However, if you notice in April of 35, the estimated payments are much higher than the other ones. That's because there's a balloon payment out there for 4.3 million. And again, I caveat this by saying, it's considered a balloon payment, but more than likely will be refinanced based on what interest rates are at that time. So Baird has that in their, in their eyesight and they will adjust that as necessary. Now, I also wanted to point out that we try to keep our levy, our mill rate, as steady as possible. So for the last few years, because it's really hard for taxpayers to adjust and for us to budget when the mill rate is doing this every year. And we try to keep that steady by adjusting that Fund 39 levy. So in some cases, we will excess levy to put money aside to pay off some of this debt. So in conversations with Baird, they have suggested to me, as they do with quite a few other districts, you want to keep that levy steady and then you take some of that excess levy and you sock it away. So we are socking away some money, so hopefully we can pay off a good chunk of that balloon payment. It sounds scarier than it is.
We've done that once before.
We have, yep, yeah. So we've been doing that, I think last year was the first year that, because we had the middle school remodel that was new, I did not do an excess levy last year, but all other years that I've been here, we've been doing an excess levy. And it's just kind of like a, it's not that big of an impact to the taxpayer for the mill rate. It keeps the mill rate steady and it also allows us to save money to pay off that debt hopefully quicker and save some interest.
And then does Baird kind of, well, it'll be with Mr. Sippert. Will they be like, hey, this might be a good time to refinance that? So it's not like we're going to get to January of 35 and it's like, oh, we got to scramble to do something if it's, if it's, if it sounds good to do it sooner, they'll do it sooner?
Correct. It depends on when you can defuse the current debt and when you can restructure it, right? So there's terms with that. But Baird does such a nice job of saying, this may not be the only debt that you're going to incur in, by the time of 2035. Like 10 years from now, you might be looking at another referendum. And then, like they've done in the past, they've restructured that debt to pay off the old debt, so the impact on the actual payment stays pretty steady. So they're really good about long range planning and that, that, you know, they're not putting a big balloon payment on here in two years, right? They're looking at it, okay, maybe in 10 years, you might be looking at something else. Any questions? Fascinating topic.
Maybe sometime, Mike, you could give us a figure of a total evaluation of our district facilities and so on, so I can take a look at our total debt compared to our actual.
Well, the value, the value of the facilities, you know, you're going to get that from our insurance company and then the state gives us a per square foot valuation. So we know what we paid for the building, right? But it's, you know, it may be more than that, it may be less, it's going to depend. I don't know if a valuation's going to be really helpful in comparison to the debt.
I just take.
I mean, we have it.
I would assume if we go further, they look at for bond rating and so on. Do they use that as a figure at all anymore?
Not really, no. They look more at the financial statements, how we've performed historically and what our projections are for the future. And then they look at, because Peggy and I have been, or Dr. Larson and I have been on many of those calls where they're asking about what the community is looking like, what is the growth potential for a bond rating? And that's really what they're looking for.
Anything else from board members for Mrs. Knapp? Well, thanks for coming back.
Oh, I'll be, I'm still up here for the next one too, so.
Oh, okay.
Which is it going to be a spot to talk about?
All right. Wisconsin Educators Risk Management Cooperative Transfer.
Essentially, Monica holds an office with this group and so we've held the money for WORMAC. So now with Monica moving on, that money, it will go with Monica to her new school. So she just needs in our minutes a motion to transfer that account.
Correct. I don't want to change bank accounts, I'd like to keep it at Fortify, which is local here. And then just North Fond du Lac becomes a fiscal agent for WORMAC.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Verich, second by Kunde to transfer monies for WORMAC to Fond du Lac, North Fond du Lac. Questions, comments from the board? Roll call, please.
Verich.
Aye.
Ackman.
Aye.
Harder.
Aye.
Kunde, I Stelzner.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye. Okay, well, thanks for coming back.
I'm going to play the next one too. It's a full package tonight.
Oh, okay, all right. Budget adjustment due to final healthcare estimates.
So I figured it would be easier for you guys to dislike me than to start Mr. Sippert's career with disliking him. But in reality, what happened is we passed, the board passed the budget at the annual meeting, correct? And the projected deficit at the time was 299, 681. This was before we met with our health insurance brokers. And unfortunately, we are trending extremely high. And I want to caveat that as well by saying, you have to remember, we went in January, they really only had nine months of, not even nine months, probably seven months of data to look at. And they had to use that data to project what they expected our health insurance cost to be this coming year. So it came in much higher than we expected. So I do have a budget proposal on the board or on the agenda to increase the expenditures due to health insurance solely to $23,853,709, which is a projected deficit of $741,316. We do have a healthy fund balance. We have had discussions about this in the past with self-funding, that we knew we were going to have one or bad years. Well, this is clearly a bad year, but we are making strides in trying to turn that around. We, the district has implemented some additional advocacy programs for employees to steer them to potentially lower cost, higher providers or higher level providers. We're hoping that employees will utilize that, educating our employees, trying to do that. Cottingham and Butler came in and recommended a 30, almost a 36% increase in insurance premiums this year. Peggy and I talked, Dr. Larson and I talked about it, and we just, we couldn't in good conscience recommend that to the employee base. So the premiums were raised 25% and Mr. Sippert and I were talking this afternoon regarding the health insurance. I still think, the estimate provided by the brokers is extremely high because they can only look at what our performance the last nine months. They can't look at what we're potentially going to implement to lower cost to the district. So we're hopeful that it won't come in as bad as it seems, but again, we knew we had this. And if you think about it, we came in at a surplus of over $600,000 last year and that was because of insurance. So it's a, you know, it's a, it's a seesaw. But I just wanted to make sure that we included that so he, Mr. Sippert doesn't come in at the end of the year at a $700,000 deficit and gets blamed for it. You can blame me.
I'm just curious, I mean, if you listen to the news, this isn't unusual for insurance increases. Did they comment on if, you know, in the, if we didn't self-insure, like what premiums are going up regardless?
No, but, you know, we have to look back historically, every insurance company, every year that we were going to bid, they were proposing a 20 to 25% increase every year. And due to Cottingham and Butler being really great negotiators, they were always able to get a new insurance company, even though people don't like to switch providers or insurance companies. For four years, we had no increase. So it's coming back to haunt us now. I just hope that we can start implementing some of these, these advocacy programs through Health Check 360 to encourage people to use higher outcome, lower cost services.
When we initially came to the self-funded program and they gave us the illustration, we looked at the 10 years. So we understood that potential of one year we could be in the positive and the next years, or two or three years, they didn't come back to the positive in the wave of this kind of a program. So we were, we were fully understanding that that potentially could happen.
Correct. And just as an example, a school district that I'm familiar with, they went self-funded a few years ago and they had about a $300,000 loss for two or three years and finally were able to turn it around and this year they had almost a million dollar surplus. So I'm hopeful, last, this year was our first year doing it and we knew that there was a potential. So I think with just continued advocacy, we can, we can hopefully turn it around. So I think I need a motion for this updated budget projecting the 741 deficit.
I move to approve the updated budget as presented.
Motion by Verich, second by Hanson to approve the updated budget as presented. Any other questions or comments from the board? Roll call, please.
Verich.
Aye.
Ackman.
Aye.
Harder.
Aye.
Kunde, I Stelzner.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye. I would entertain a motion to have one board meeting in January, dated January 19th of 2026.
I move to have only one board meeting in January on the 19th of 2026.
I'll second.
Motion by Harder, second by Stelzner to approve one board meeting in January, January 19th, 2026. Questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Ackman.
Aye.
Harder.
Aye.
Kunde, I Stelzner.
Aye.
Verich.
Aye.
Hanson.
Aye. Admin reports. Any additions from administration?
I hate to say the obvious, but you know, our football team's 26.
Yeah.
We're very excited. It's fun to be at the high school too, the kids are pumped. One of the teachers actually graduated from Little Shoot, so this week they're encouraging people to wear all their, like, you know, Winnie Conning Wool's gear and all of those kinds of things, and she wore her Little Shoot jacket to do it. So it was quite the commentary from the football team. It's the only time she's going to wear it. She's done, she's putting it away. I made sure of that. But it's been kind of fun, just a good week. So it'll be a long Friday for everybody, but.
Yeah, I think that's, that's awesome. I just think it's very exciting for the school and for the community as well, so good luck to them on Thursday.
And you did hear that there's a pep rally Wednesday night at 7:00 and then they're leaving town about, starting at 2:45, going to each of the buildings and then they'll head out of town on Friday, or excuse me, Thursday. But Wednesday night's pep rally, then send them off.
Okay. I have just a couple of things. I want to kudos out to the elementary and elementary play to have elementary play Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday and have 108 students involved is a pretty big undertaking. And just to see the excitement and so on with the elementary, with their play that they had over the period of time. And so, thank you and kudos to all of them that put that together. And for the board, I just wanted to mention that I had attended our last state resolution and policy meeting to put the resolutions together for our state convention coming up in January. And so, you know, January, one of the meetings, probably the 19th or maybe before Peggy, you could send out when I get those resolutions to the board, if we have any discussion prior to the convention to take in. I would think probably by mid-December, so we have them.
Any questions for administration from the board on their reports? Moving on to board reports, any communications?
I have none.
Okay. Committee reports, HR and finance?
We have not met.
Marketing and public relations have not met and policy.
Nothing for policy as well.
Okay. And with that, I would entertain a motion to move into executive session.
So move.
Motion by Kunde, second by Harder to move into executive session under state statute 19.85 to approve executive session minutes from November 3rd, 2025, and Wisconsin statute 19.85 sub 1, sub E, for competitive bargaining purposes where closed session is necessary, specifically to review performance and contractual priorities for negotiating purposes for each of the construction managers and their interviews on December 8th, 2025. The board will reconvene in open session and may take action on items discussed in executive session.